Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting. It is Wednesday, November 20th, 2024. Call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, before we get started, just a reminder, we have two opportunities for public comment this evening. The first opportunity is for agenda items only. If you'd like to make a comment, please sign up on the back sheet under the Agenda Items, and you'll be recognized, and I'll call you to the microphone. There's a second opportunity for a public comment, which is at the end of the meeting. It does not have to be on Agenda Items. It can be anything that's on your mind. Again, please sign the list in the back. I'll recognize you to come up to the microphone, and you can make your comments. We do try to hold to around three minutes per comment. With that, I'll move along to Consent Items for approval of the minutes. Paula?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if there are no objections, I request that the minutes... Oops. Thank you. Thanks. Mr. Chairman, if there are no objections, I request that the minutes from October 23rd be approved by unanimous consent.
Any comments? Okay, thank you. Accounts payable, Kim?
Yes, I have the bills list for November 6, 2024. Total all funds, $962,196.26. I also have the bills list for November 20th, 2024. Total all funds, $1,615,676.20.
Okay. Any comments on that? If there's no further comments, I'll accept the motion to accept the consent items as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we're going to open a public hearing. Consider ordinance to amend the Township Code for Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Prohibit parking on a portion of Tree Line Drive. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was a recommendation by the Township Police Department for purpose of establishing a no parking area from the St. Leonard's Road intersection along the northern side of Tree Line Drive to the western intersection of Sealing Drive. If I may make a motion.
Please.
I move to approve ordinance number 621, amending the Northampton Township Code, specifically Chapter 15, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Part 4, General Parking Regulations, Section 402, Parking Prohibited at All Times in Certain Locations, to establish no parking on a portion of Tree Line Drive.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further comment, Bob?
No. It's clear safety issue, so I think it makes sense.
Thank you. Kim?
Think it's a great idea.
Paula?
Great. I'm happy.
No comment from me. Is there any public comment before we take the vote? Okay, thank you. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Next, under New Business, I'd like to present Bob Pellegrino, our Township Manager, and Julie Neri, our Finance Director, to present the proposed budget for 2025. Hello.
Let's hope my voice holds out, but I'm going to try and get through this budget presentation fairly quickly. But there is a lot to talk about, and there's a lot of things that the township is doing and will continue to do in the next few years, and I'm going to highlight some of that stuff. So, I'm going to talk about four major areas tonight of the Township budget. Public Safety Services, Infrastructure. We have a lot of projects that have been in the works for a very long time that are coming to fruition in the next few years. I'm going to give you a brief financial summary of the budget itself, and then talk a little bit about the real estate taxes and what's in store. So, we'll start with Police. This is a chart that shows crime stats for our department, and you can see that the call volume in 2019 was around 20,000, a little over 20,000. That has come down and has been pretty consistently in the 18,000 and change range. Our clearance rate, which is the rate that our detectives clear crimes, is also fairly consistent at about 52%. And the number of crimes from 2019 to 2023 has dropped, the total number of crimes. A lot of the crime we do see here is fraud crime. That impacts the clearance rates because they are very difficult to solve. But I think overall, our police department does an outstanding job in protecting this community, and this budget will actually... In the budget, it's proposed that we expand the number of officers that we have, adding two patrol officers. I'll talk about that for a second. Right now, we have an average of 5.2 officers on each shift. The chief and I have had discussion about increasing that, and I believe that I've talked to some of you about the need. So, this budget includes actually three officers. Two will be assigned to patrol. With a reassignment of some others, we hope to get that total number of officers on each shift up to 6.2. We also just recently assigned an officer as a school resource officer at the Holland Middle School. That's our second school resource officer, the first being at the high school, which we've had for a very long time. The budget also includes funding to update some equipment in the police department. The tasers are being replaced. If the budget is approved, tasers have a life span, and ours are at the end of that life, so this budget includes funding for that. There are some upgrades to some of the armory and equipment in the armory, and we're also increasing number of license plate readers. Those are... That's equipment that the officers use to identify stolen vehicles and potential suspects that are under warrants. On the fire services side, I think everyone knows we've completed construction of the two new fire stations in Richborough and Holland. They are outstanding buildings. They're state-of-the-art. We are the envy of the county, probably the region. This is now a department that provides 24/7 coverage, and we have seen a... As a result of both increasing the number of firefighters on staff to provide that 24/7 coverage, we've seen a corresponding reduction in response time to fires. Uh-oh. This is a short clip of Harvey Boyer...
Let's be honest.
...state fire commissioner who spoke at our dedication, our building dedication. I just... It's probably 15 seconds, but I think this is... He's making a very important point about response time.
In today's fire service, quick response is critical. The timeframe of fire spread in today's world has increased exponentially. It isn't the same fire it was 30 years ago. Northampton identified this as a top priority and a guiding light for planning, and along with finding solution to staffing issues comes to the ideal that the facilities that are needed to move forward into the future, and that is...
All right. So, that was Harvey Boyer again, Deputy State Fire Commissioner, who was kind enough to come down and speak at our dedication. His point there is that response time, it's all about response time. It's all about getting to the fire quickly. They're not the same fires as they were years ago. Materials are different. The burning is... The speed at which fires burn is a lot faster, and it's very important that our firefighters get to the scene as quickly as possible. This is a chart that shows the number of career firefighters in the green, the number of qualified volunteers that we've had on the force in blue, and the yellow line is the average response time. So, I think you can see that as the number of firefighters decreased, we saw a corresponding increase in response time. Now, qualified firefighters are those that can make calls 25% of the time, at least 25% of the time or more. Some might make 30% or 35% of the calls. Not too many make 50% of the calls. So, you need a lot of volunteers to be the equivalent of a paid firefighter. You need maybe four to one. So, you can see the yellow line showing that as we've increased the number of paid firefighters, career firefighters in the green, you've seen that response time drop. Now, I think it's important, if I can point out 2022 to 2024, you see a response time. And these are average response times. Some are faster, some are slower, but seven and a half minutes in 2022 before we staffed Holland was the average response time because you had firefighters, paid firefighters going from Richborough to Holland. Now, we have staff in Holland, and you can see that that time has reduced to about five minutes on average. Very important. I think the chart shows that what this board has done to shore up the fire service is working and is protecting the community. Just talk a few seconds about our rescue squad. The big change, I think, in 2024 is, besides the 24/7 coverage out of Richborough, which we have had for a long time, we now have a dedicated unit in Holland. They are there from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. seven days a week. They're working out of the fire station and fire... Deputy... I'm sorry. Rescue Chief Jason Dowd has said, he said it at the dedication of the fire stations, that they've already seen a 30% reduction in response time in the Holland area. Very critical to get to patients who need care as quickly as possible. A little bit about Public Works. You all know what they do. They pave roads, they take care of our stormwater system, they plow snow, they do ice control, they do facilities maintenance, and they are also responsible for park maintenance. One of the goals of the board, established about 2019 or 2020, was that we needed to pave more roads. So, I have been working for the township since 2007, and at that time, and up until about 2014, for about seven or eight years, we saw about anywhere from two and a half to three and a half, maybe four miles of our road system paved. We have a 182-mile road system. It just wasn't enough. This board made the decision to add more funding for roads and charged the administration with paving 10 miles of road each year. You can see that spike in 2016. That was a catch-up year. We borrowed money for a lot of different projects, but also added some funding for road paving, and we did 17, almost 17 and a half miles in that year. We did less in the year after that, but you can see from 2020 on, when the goal of 10 miles was directed to the administration, we've been pretty consistently between 9.8 and 10. 2022 was a little bit of an aberration because that's the year we paved Elm Avenue. And frankly, Elm Avenue sucked up a lot of our financial resources because it was a complete reconstruction of the road, but you see the benefit of that today. It's a very nice, nice road. Okay. I'm going to talk again for the umpteenth time about some of our infrastructure projects. Pedestrian safety projects, roads and bridges, facilities and traffic signal systems. Let's first talk about pedestrian safety projects. We have five projects that are in the works, ongoing, or in some state of potential close construction. Richborough Sidewalks Phase Two is an extension of the Phase One, which completed sidewalks in the downtown area. Phase Two, which we have a million-dollar grant to complete, will extend sidewalks into the neighborhoods, which will allow residents who live in and around Richborough to walk into town. This is down Bustleton Pike. This is up Temperance Lane. It will complete a sidewalk across the Mallard Creek Village to connect the age-qualified housing developments and those properties further up. We have a trail project that is Rockway to Tyler State Park. This is also funded by a, almost a $900,000 grant. That is in the design phase. I believe construction will occur sometime in 2026. Fur Drive Pedestrian Crossing, which was a project identified by this board to provide safe crossing on Newtown-Richborough Road, that is a project we are planning to do next year. It will involve a flashing pedestrian warning signal, crosswalks, and an extension of, a short trail extension to get pedestrians to Number One Lane Trail and into Tyler State Park, and frankly, also into our recreation center facility. We have the Ironworks Creek Sidewalks Project. This is a project that has been around for at least five years. We initially got a grant to complete this of about $800,000. I don't mind saying that the state is funding this and bidding this project, and they dragged their feet for the last five years, and now the project is a million and a half dollars. Fortunately, they are picking up the additional cost. That project is slated to start next year. And then, most recently, in 2024, based on feedback from the board, we've identified about a dozen intersections, some including school crossings, that would be enhanced for pedestrian safety. These are like additional signage, perhaps some handicap curb ramp improvements, and more visible crosswalks. All of these, all of these intersections have been identified, and we have concept plans. We're planning to do, I believe, one intersection this year, which is East Holland, Old Jordan and Justice. That is a school crossing. We're going to, we're going to be enhancing the crosswalk visibility there, and then there are others that are not necessarily school crossings, but we believe warrant improvement for pedestrian safety. I'm going to flip through a few quick visuals here. Uh-oh. There we go. Little technical difficulty. The, on this concept plan, the blue line represents the connection from Rockway to Tyler State Park. It's a, it's a trail system that uses the old roadbed of Newtown-Richborough Road and goes along the, through, actually, a little part of it into the woods, and then it comes out under the bridge into Tyler State Park. There is already a walkway under the bridge. We're tying into that. The yellow part on the screen is a connection from Rockway to Holland Road and, I'm sorry, St. Leonard's Road, and at that intersection, we will be constructing a traffic signal. Let's see. This is a visual of the Fur Drive Crossing. You can see the orange area is the trail extension and then the crossing of the road. There's a flashing pedestrian signal, which you can't really see too well. It's in the little box. The purple line on this graphic is a potential future trail to tie into, tie into Tyler and keep pedestrians off of Number One Lane Trail. It's something that the DCNR, the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, has said they would prefer to have, and we've said, "That's great, but you need to pay for it." So, we are continually applying for grants to have them do that. And then, this is the Ironworks Creek Project, sidewalk project. The yellow areas... Let me start with the orange areas. They are areas of existing sidewalk, just kind of a mishmash. We're tying everything together. The yellow areas are new sidewalk, and the blue areas are facilities that are installed to get across Ironworks Creek, and they will be part of the sidewalk system, but they're a little bit bigger of a, of a project, and that's why this project frankly is one and a half million dollars to build. All right. A little bit about roads and bridges. We have Lower Holland Road Bridge. It's been a bridge on our radar for a little while. The state does an inspection of four of our bridges every year, every other year, I should say, and they've identified Lower Holland Road as potentially needing to be replaced. We're not there yet, but we recently applied for state funding, and we were awarded $1.45 million to replace this bridge. It's part of a PennDOT Bridge Bundling Program, where they bundle all these bridge projects together for economies of scale, and that, I believe, is a 2026 project. We have the Buck Road Streetscape and Bridge Project. That is a project, as I said, we've had some of these projects around for 10 years. This is one of them. This is replacing the bridge over Mill Creek with a wider bridge, having that bridge accommodate a longer left turn lane up Old Bristol Road, and doing a streetscape project between Holland and Buck and the bridge, and also on the other side of the railroad crossing, redesigning and redesigning the intersection of Buck and Old Bristol with left turn lanes and a more, a more perpendicular intersection. That is a project that is now fully funded by PennDOT. I believe the estimated construction cost is between 11 and 12 million dollars. Our share of this cost has been about $550,000. We are funding the, we funded the preliminary engineering, and now PennDOT's picked up final engineering and all of the construction cost. The same is true of Jacksonville and Alms House. A roundabout is proposed at that intersection. That is likely a 2025 project. That is in design, perhaps final design now, and I don't, I'm sure no one will disagree that that intersection needs work. That's a nightmare intersection. And that also is fully funded by PennDOT. I believe that construction cost is about $3 million. Funded by PennDOT, our investment in that project was about $30,000. We did some concept plans and convinced the state that it was a viable project to fix a problem on their roads. The Township Road Extension and Roundabout, like the Buck Road Streetscape Project, it's been around about 10 years from concept, from our first visions of doing this project, and now it has finally come to, coming to fruition. It looks like a 2027 construction. I'll have another slide that shows you some of the timelines, but this project will, will alleviate, is intended to alleviate traffic congestion at Second Street Pike and Alms House Roads. And then, more recently, we've proposed a project to do a curb extension or a jut-out at Ivy Green entrance on Jacksonville Road. If you drive Jacksonville Road, you know that there are yellow delineators at that, at the entrance of that age-qualified development. They were put there because there was a dangerous situation where motorists were coming out of the intersection and motorists on Jacksonville Road heading east, I guess that is, would, or maybe it's south, would, would cut over, or west, I don't know, would cut over into the, into the right-hand lane too quickly, and there was potential accidents at that intersection. We had a number of complaints from residents in the development, and the solution was to put those delineators there. The problem with those is every year, the snowplows take them out, and we're constantly replacing them. So, this is a more permanent solution. This is a concept that shows the Buck Road Streetscape This is a concept that shows the Buck Road Streetscape. The arrow, the green arrow to the right shows, and this is out of the Holland Master Plan as well, shows the realignment of Holland Road out to Buck Road. The arrow to the left shows the location of the Mill, Mill Creek Bridge replacement. You can see the orange there is Streetscape. It actually should go all the way up to old, or Buck and, and Holland Roads, but this is unfortunately an older concept that I had in the files. And then you can see the orange improvements at Old Bristol and Buck. This is a major project in our community in Holland, designed to beautify the area and relieve traffic congestion along that section of the road. This is a pictorial of the Jacksonville and Alms House Roundabout. Again, this is in design. The blue areas are actually, the blue shaded areas are actually the waterways there, and this is a, I believe, a 2025, 2026 project. This is a pictorial again of the Township Road Extension and Roundabout. You've seen this before, extending Township Road to the intersection of Second Street Pike and Bustleton, so that traffic coming up Bustleton Pike can cut over Township Road and out to Newtown-Richburg Road without going through the intersection of Second Street Pike and Alms House Road. This is another project that again is, is in design, final design, and we're looking at construction probably in 2027. This is a little visual of the curb extension at Jacksonville Road and Ivy Green. It's just a curb jut out. There'll be more grass area. It's a permanent solution to the temporary solution we have at the intersection at this point. Now, facilities. We have a number of facility projects planned for the next, actually now and next year. One is the creation of some ceremonial garden patio area at the country club, at the banquet facilities. These are intended to shift the way we look at weddings. Weddings are, the wedding venues are changing. They are, brides seem to want more to have the wedding, the cocktail hour, and the reception in one place. So we are shifting our thinking to keep in step with the changes in the industry. We have, and I have a slide showing you what they're gonna look like. We have court restorations at Municipal Park. These are taking the six basketball courts and the ice hockey rink and redoing the surfaces. They're actually gonna mill out all of the asphalt, put some under drainage in to fix the problems that we've had with cracking, and then to put asphalt back in and put the court surfaces that are needed for those particular sports in place. The one change that we're making to the six basketball courts is that two of them will be converted to six pickleball courts, like four pickleball courts, I believe. Six? Six pickleball courts. So we know there's a big demand for pickleball. We're trying to meet that demand, and these will be courts that are open to the public. We have funding in the budget for some renovations to this room. If you've noticed, we've done some changes to the lobby area, renovated the bathrooms. Nothing has probably changed in the building for 30 years, so because of the flood we had earlier in the year, we took advantage and leveraged the insurance reimbursement and made some improvements to the front of the lobby, and I hope you, you like them. I know I do, and I know my staff really appreciates them. And then in this room, we wanted to extend the improvements, redo the carpet, reface the dais, and make some different improvements to the back of the dais where you all sit, and, and we know it's, it's woefully tired and need some renovations. And then finally, an emergency generator for this building. We are right now served by the generator that is behind the old police station. You all know that that building is in the RDA's hands, and we will be looking for proposals in mid-December, perhaps something that, a proposal or a series of proposals to purchase the building and develop it, or the property, I should say, and develop it, and hopefully that will be on your agenda either in January or February. But getting back to the generator, when we sell that building, this building will no longer have emergency power. And it's, we do have a, an emergency generator plan that not only talks about what the needs are for this building, but all of our facilities, and we'll look to implement that plan over a period of time. This is a artist's rendering, I guess, or a concept of the ceremonial gardens at the country club. It's really just paver, outdoor paver area coming off the patios. There will be a wall to separate the two banquet rooms so that you can have two separate events in each room without disturbing the other, and a lot of it is landscaping. And we're going to be doing this project, if it's approved in the budget, with a combination of contractors, outside contractors, and our own forces, country club maintenance folks. We'll do all the landscaping, frankly. Traffic signal systems. We, every year, I think next year, we're in year 10 of receiving a grant called Greenlight Go. These are improvements to our traffic signal system to improve efficiency at our intersections and to keep traffic moving, and also to make the intersections safer. So Churchville and Bristol Road is one of the projects. We have a project at Bristol and Haprow Road, and three projects on Newtown-Richburg Road, a new signal at St. Leonard's, improvements to the signal at Holland and Rockway, and improvements to the signal at Spring Garden-Mill Road, all designed to improve traffic flow and efficiency. This is the timeline I referenced. We have five projects that we'll be looking to finish this year in 2025 and 2026. It looks like we will be starting and finishing seven projects in each year. Now, some of the 2025 projects will likely roll into '26, and some of the 2026 projects will likely roll into '27, like the Jacksonville and Alms House Roundabout. That is one. We think it's gonna start next year and likely be finished in 2026. And then the Township Road Extension and Roundabout and the 332 Trail, we believe, are maybe started in '26 and finished in '27. The Roundabout may not start till 2027. I think this is important to note for the public. Over the last 10 years, we've acquired just over $40 million in state-funded projects, either for roads and bridges, open space, facility improvements, traffic signals, equipment acquisitions, sidewalks and trails, and stormwater basins. You can see the road improvements are the largest amount, about just under $25 million, and about $7 million for facility improvements. These are the grants we've received for construction, the fire stations, the police station, et Now, a quick summary of the budget. This budget is $65.4 million. Almost $44 million is operations. We have $13 million in proprietary funds. That is the refuse fund, paying for all of our trash collection disposal, and also the country club operations. Next year, we've proposed $5 million in capital improvements. A lot of those projects that you, I just talked about, these are either matching funds or projects that we're doing on our own. For example, we are paying for the signal at St. Leonard's Road and 332 because we were not able to get state funding for that. And then we have about $2.8 million in pension funds. The only thing I'll say about our pension plans, especially the defined benefit pension plans, is that our costs have been very stable for the last five years, and with the, the good news in my mind is with the current stock market price, if it holds through the end of the year, our actuarial valuation for 2026 will be a, a very positive evaluation that impacts the amount of money that we have to put into our pension plans for the next few years. So in 2026, we'll be impacted, and 2027. So I believe that the cost of our pension plans will continue to be stable, at least for the next two to three years. These are the additional appropriations for public safety. Remember, I talked about our firefighters. We added 16 firefighters to staff Holland this year. Next year, we're paying for a full 12 months of those employees. That drives the cost, among other things. And then adding three police officers, they're all in the budget. I'm not sure they'll all be hired in 2025. I hope they will, but right now, it's very difficult, and there's a lot of competition to hire police officers, about 730,000 in additional cost there. But the slide points to the fact that you, the board, have made this investment in our community and in public safety, and, and frankly, you're doing what you've been charged to do by being elected to the office. A very quick pie chart on our appropriations by department. This does not include our pension plans, our proprietary funds, trash, and country club. And you can see that between police services, fire and rescue services, and streets and highways, 62% of our budget goes for public safety and roads. The next largest chunk is our debt service, which is a very manageable 10%, 7% for capital improvements, 9% for recreation, and, and so forth. And, let's see. I, I threw this slide in here just to brag a little bit, because this shows the rate, the relationship between our budgeted expenditures and our actual expenditures. Since 2014, the only year where we have exceeded our budgeted expenditures was 2022, and that was by about $400,000. This is overall, and half of that went to road improvements. The other half went to other capital projects, so I'm quite proud of the fact that we stay well within our budgets, and we're very close when it comes to our budgeting practices. And that is a credit, not to me, it's a credit to our department directors who monitor budgets, manage their resources, and try and squeeze the efficiencies out of the dollars that they get. Little bit about real estate taxes. This chart shows the township's property assessment in the blue bars. I think it's important to note, when you look at 2010, our assessed value, which is the number used to determine how much revenue we will receive based on the tax rate we charge, was $598.5 million. In 2025, it's $597.2 million. We are not quite back to where we were in 15 years ago. We're getting there, we're close. So what naturally had to happen is that the tax rate, because the assessment dropped so low from the downturn in 2008, the tax rate had to go up a little bit to offset the revenue losses unless we wanted to cut services. The boards decided not to cut services, and you can see that the tax rate was stable for about nine years, and it wasn't until 2019, 2020, corresponding with the increase in police services. I know we added an officer in there somewhere, and then the increase in firefighters that we, we had to increase our tax rate to pay for public safety. I think it's a great chart. It shows that we've weathered the storm, and we do a pretty good job with managing our resources here. So what does that mean for next year? Our median home assessment, which has also been going up, is just over $40,000. That's the assessed value that is used to calculate the median tax rate, that dollar value of tax that is paid to, for township services. This budget has a tax increase in it of four and a half mils. Three and a half mils is for fire service, and one mil is for debt service. The one mil for debt service will give us enough revenue to cover all of our debt service payments through the term of the bond issue that we, the bonds that we have outstanding through 2043. So that will never have to increase unless we borrow a large amount of money again, and I don't expect we're gonna need to do that anytime soon. What does this all mean then to the median assessed home? It's $1,300 a year, about $108 a month. So for all of the township services, you pay $108 a month if you're assessed at the median. All right. The dollar bill shows how we relate to the county and the school district. The school district is 70% of your real estate tax bill. If you're a resident living here, that big tax bill you get in the fall is the school district. The one you get in the spring is the county and the township. The county and the township are about the same. County's at 14%, township's at 16%. That is based on next year's tax rate. And that is the, that's the conclusion of my presentation. Does anyone have any questions? Oh, can I say one other thing? I really wanna thank the staff, because like I said, they do all the work. I sit up here and I give you this flowery presentation, but they do all the work. Maybe it's not flowery, but they do all the work, they manage their budgets. Kudos to Julie Narisi, sitting next to me, who was our finance director. I wanna thank Bill Wirt, who had a, our assistant manager, who had a big part in preparing the budget and this presentation. Alex Nagy, the assistant to the manager, he does all this, this stuff, this electronic stuff. And also to Lisa Russo, who was very helpful in, in gathering all the stuff together and putting the documents together. So kudos to the staff, kudos to all of our department directors. They do a great job. They make me look good, and for that, I thank them. Now, questions?
Paula?
Excellent, excellent. Very clear and concise. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Kim?
I just wanna say, I, I, this is my favorite meeting of the year, because I'll tell you what, you, you get to see, the public gets to see what we work on every month. We, all these things that we, that you went over, we work on it every single month at the meeting. Well, we'll talk about this, and we'll talk about that, and we get it all done. So it's kinda like a nice synopsis of everything we've done. I also wanna thank the administration and the staff for all the time and effort and putting up with our questions and, you know, everything that we ask you, and change and fix, and, and the thing that I like the best is that everybody has worked together to make sure that this budget is so tight and so lean, and without cutting services. I mean, how wonderful is that? Of course, my favorite is the dollar pie chart, because you just see, for your tax dollar, for 16 cents, you know, on, on your tax dollar, you're getting all these services. It's, it's unbelievable, really, when you think about it. I'm really happy with a lot of the stuff that has gone on this year. Our senior center, we had a lot of new changes there. It, we're kinda zhuzh-ing it up a little bit. It's gonna be so, so much nicer, so not losing any services, just adding to it. And, you know, Parks and Rec have been doing a fabulous job. Um, and, uh, you know, Parks and Rec have been doing a fabulous job. And, and the reason I, I say both of them is because I'm liaison for both of those. Um, what else did I wanna say? Very proud of our 10 miles of road. I've been on the board when it wasn't doing 10 miles, and, um, it was a big decision to, to step it up because I remember when we only did a few miles because I think it was one of the hurricanes and, and the price of, of, um, uh, like, you know, road material went up so high that we couldn't, that we couldn't do as many as we wanted. So we had to make that decision to, to push it forward in the budget. Um, let's see. Oh, the other thing I really like, too, is that our trash fees are unchanged and funded through 2029. And they're doing a great job. Really happy, our residents have been very happy with, with our trash service. Um, and that's it, but I just wanna say, great job, great job to my fellow board members and to our, our staff and administration, everyone. This is a team effort. It's not, it's just not one person, it is a group effort, and I just wanna say, everybody did a great job.
Thank you. Thanks, Kim. Bob?
Sure, thank you. So I don't know if this is my favorite meeting of the year, but it is a nice opportunity, truly, to say publicly, thank you, even though I wish more people were watching on YouTube right now so they could see how the process works and how their money is being spent. Thank you to the staff, who is behind the curtain, doing all the heavy lifting, doing the work. Mr. Palgrino says it's their job to make him look good. It's also your job to make us look good, and you tend to do that, so we appreciate it. And, you know, last year's meeting, it seemed the theme was public safety, and there was a significant increase in tax primarily geared toward public safety. So I hearken back to one of the earlier slides in your presentation. Lo and behold, it's working. Look at the response time from the fire department. So it's working. And I said last year I would stand behind that, not even knowing what the results would be, and now seeing the results, I'm glad I said it because that was worth standing behind. So this year, maybe the theme isn't quite the same, although there certainly is a public safety component. We're living in a safe place. And now you talk about projects that have been outstanding for a number of years that are coming to fruition. You're also living in a nice place, and I'm one of the first proponents to say, in life, you tend to get what you pay for, except when it comes to your tax dollars. However, I would encourage anybody who's listening, take a look at your pay stub, your tax return, your withholdings, try not to choke. Are you getting what you're paying for on your marginal federal tax rate? Is your 3.07% of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania giving you what you paid for? I think the township is giving you what you're paying for. So I, that can't be overstated. Uh, I'm proud to sit on the board with my fellow board members and to approve, ultimately, I suspect, this budget, as we did last year. The results speak for themselves. So thank you for your efforts, and let's keep Northampton safe and nice and make sure our residents are getting what they pay for.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Just a couple comments. First of all, uh, just on the roads, you know, I've been on the board now for about seven years. The road program is paying off. It's the number one piece of feedback I think all the supervisors get about our township are the roads and the conditions of the roads. And if you saw the chart, for a lot of reasons, for various times over the years, they just couldn't get to 10 miles, and we made it a priority a few years ago, and it's paying off. I would ask everyone to be patient. You can't turn that around in one or two years. This'll take us a few more years, but I do promise that if we stick with the 10, maybe a little bit more if we can every once in a while, we'll catch up. The cost of paving has skyrocketed. You know, everything that you go to the grocery store and find that your loaf of bread that four or five years ago was a dollar fifty is now three dollars. Well, asphalt and labor have also gone up, and we have to pay that price. So to stick with 10 miles, we really have to invest in it. Um, but I think that is what the people want. I do think people want a good police department, they want a good fire department, and they good, they wanted a good ambulance service, and, um, you have that. Said with a little prejudice, but you do have that. Also, definitely thank you to, to Bob and the staff. Julie, great job. For those of you who, who don't know, you could, if you are a department head and you walk in the township building during budget time, you will get pulled into the office, probably more than once, to go over the budget, refine, 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 you know, doing what they need to do to make sure this, this budget works, is tight, and ticks and ties together, and it really does. So thank you, thanks to the staff. Bob and Bill, of course, always for putting up with us and cut this and cut that and make this work. It's not always easy, but, um, thank you for that. You know, finally, last comment. Average assessed house, 27 bucks a week to get full-time police department, full-time fire department, ambulance, paramedic service, 10 miles or more of roads a year, plus all the road maintenance, park service, parks and rec, library, senior center. I'm sure I'm missing something. Country club. Country club, and all the services you get, 27 bucks. Sorry?
Trash.
Trash, trash, thank you, trash. But what a great, what a great way to run a township. My favorite slide is the comparison to budget. 10 straight years, little blip in '22, but I would still call it 10 straight years of coming in at or under budget. That's good financial management. So thank you for all of that. With that, if there's no other, is there any public comments? Okay, none with that? I'll accept a motion. Kim?
Yes, um, just, just to let everybody understand this, um, the board is required by the second-class township code to adopt a preliminary budget and advertise its availability for public inspection for a period of 20 days. Now, the budget may be adopted at any time after the 20-day period, but it must be adopted by December 31st each year. The board may also make whatever changes it deems appropriate to the preliminary budget before its adoption. The board may also make changes to the adopted preliminary budget before the final adoption scheduled for December 11th, 2024 meeting, within the limits established by the second-class township code. Now, the code states that a line item, department total, may not be changed by more than 25% and the total budget may not be changed by more than 10%. With that, may I make a motion?
Please.
I move to adopt the 2025 preliminary budget and advertise its availability for public inspection for a period of not less than 20 days as required by the second-class township code.
I'll second that.
Any, any comments? Any additional comments?
I ju, oh, I did have one little note. I just wanna say, uh, just, uh, about Public Works, that they plow, uh, get our roads plowed in winter, in snow, better than any other township in Bucks County.
Right.
And I just wanna say, no snow this year. That's it.
Are we voting on that, too?
Yes, let's do that.
Paula, any other comments?
Uh, we live in a great township. I'm very proud of us and all of us that work so hard.
Rob, anything more?
Thank you.
If you're watching out there, go review the budget while it's available, see how your money's being spent. I think it's wisely.
I agree. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Julie. Alex, Lisa, thank you. Now you have to come back.
I have to come back?
If you'd like to stay there, that's fine. Liaison reports, Kim?
Okay. All right. First, I have the senior center. Just one quick note for that. On Friday, December 6, 5:00 to 8:30 is the Holiday Marketplace Vendor and Craft Show. You can shop for a variety of local vendors and artisans. It is always a good time. You can get tons of stuff, and it's totally free. So please, stop by, December 6, 5:00 to 8:30, at the senior center. Now, Parks and Rec. Beginning in January, the senior center operating hours will be in line with the rec center. The senior center will open at 8:30 for members, and at 4:30, facility attendants will operate the front desk for evening programming. Seniors will be able to come into the building to enjoy the amenities while programs are operated. The senior center will be open to members upon completion of the programs in the evening. The winner brochure is on time and to be released on or about November 15th. The issue contains camp information, 2025-26 preschool information, the beloved Mrs. Claus event, and many new programs and events for everyone aged 18 to 99. And we would, we would take you at 100 or 101. Don't worry. The 2025-26 preschool program will be piloted, an all-day pre-kindergarten class called Ready, Set, Grow, to support the switch within the school district to begin all-day kindergarten this coming year. Having this option will help parents prepare their children to attend school all day beginning in kindergarten. The preschool will also continue to offer traditional half-day programs. The bus trip to Winterthur, scheduled for December 10, filled up so quickly that Christian, Kristen secured a date for an additional trip the following week on December 17. Seats are still open, and there is still time to grab your seat before it's sold out. The Mrs. Claus and Cookies event will take place on Friday, December 13, from 6:00 to 8:00. Seats will fill fast. Call the Park and Rec Department or visit northhamptonrec.com to register today. And with that, I just would like to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Kim. Paula?
Okay, I, um, I go on with the library board lays on report for November. The library board wants to thank us on the board here for supporting their strategic plan and their mark, their, excuse me, their branding initiative. On October 30, they held a, um, meeting with the marketing firm by the name of Swell and the library staff and, and library patrons and the board members. And we're, there we are in the libraries in, excuse me, process of finalizing an RFP for our planned website design, design or research. And then also the adult programming update. Welcoming the Stranger is a program the library runs, and it hosted 29 English language, as a second language class for the fall session. And they had 300 students working to learn the English language. Okay, the fall session already has started. On November 9, the library hosted a final, uh, Second Saturday Program, it's called. These program costs are sponsored by Friends of the Free Library of Northampton. And this year, we held 10 programs and hosted more than 850 attendees, our highest attendance ever. I just wanted to mention that our library is growing by leaps and bounds, uh, thanks to our director, a lot to our director and the board. It's really moving, and I think it's going to be a cultural hotspot for us in Northampton. I really believe that. Okay, and the Veterans Advisory Commission is having, uh, Hometown Heroes Reel Lang again. That's on the 7th of December at 11:00 a.m., right over here on Alm's House, the Union Cemetery. We are, we invite everyone to come and lay reeds. It's a very nice ceremony, uh, for the first responders and the military. We're gonna lay reeds and followed by, um, by volunteers. So we are very excited about that. And I also wanted to mention just quickly that, um, there is some scamming going on more recently, and the police, uh, are trying to contact people to tell them, don't fall for it. They're calling from the actual police station phone number, and they're trying to get money. Uh, they're calling residents and telling them that they missed or have a warrant, and they need to pay a fee. And that's definitely, you don't give them any information if they do call over the phone, just hang up. So we, um, anyone in the area doesn't have social media, if you can let other people know. There is a do-not-call phone number, uh, to call, and it does register your number as not being there, so it won't, you want, it's 1-888-777-3406, 888-777-3406. And that will end your scam calls and all those people that bother you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula? Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the historical commission, uh, we want everyone to be aware, who may not already know, that they are, in fact, the custodians of the Township Archives, which are located at the Free Library. The Archives include 100-plus collections from deeds and maps to genealogy records and artifacts. The Township Archivist offers genealogy and historic research assistance, along with free digitization of your family's photographs and documents, and will also conduct oral history interviews. The commission has been working on a number of projects, which include historical marker signs for the township-owned Addisville Reformed Church Cemetery on Second Street Pike and Feaster Van Horn Cemetery on Middle Holland Road, also cemetery restoration of the township-owned cemeteries. A cemetery survey was conducted, and currently they are working on planning a possible phased restoration. And finally, since 2022, the Historic House Plaque Program has generated 53 plaques for resident homes. The commission would like to thank longtime residents and members Jack Kay, Chair Steve Arty, and Vice Chair Jim Finnegan for their service at the NTHC. There will be three seat vacancies in 2025, so interested residents for next year are encouraged to apply at the township. The Archives is open Mondays, 4:00 to 7:00, Wednesdays, 1:00 to 4:00, alternate Saturdays, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and by appointment. You may reach them at 215-357-3050, extension 114, or through the Archives catalog, which is open 24/7 at www.northhamptontownshiplibrary.org backslash archives. As for my promised monthly addressing of what I've called the PFOS issue, uh, nothing major to report. I will note there was a nationwide Zoom call that was attended, I believe, by Chairman Salisker and also Assistant Manager Wirt. I'm told it highlighted the scope of the problem, noting that it is, uh, as I've referenced before, nationwide, not particularly informative, but we remain on it and diligent, and I will continue to update as new news becomes available. Otherwise, happy and safe Thanksgiving, and I'm disappointed to see that we relocated the turkey that was behind the chairman because apparently it looked like it was sitting on his head.
Yes. Continue to be the big turkey in the room.
Proudly.
Thank you. Uh, it did not, uh, announce in the beginning of the meeting. My apologies, Mr. Moore could not be here this evening, so he will not be giving a report tonight. Uh, I just have a few things to, uh, review. First off, um, you may have seen, if you drive around the town, there is a burn ban in effect in Bucks County. That is no open burning, um, outside at all. No fire pits, no chimeneas, all those things. It has been extremely dry, and the, uh, conditions have been favorable for extremely, um, difficult fire conditions. There will be some rain, I think, tonight into tomorrow, and although that rain is gonna be good for a couple of days, they do not expect it to significantly decrease the, um, the excessive fire danger. So please be aware of that. No fireworks and all those things. Just along the safety line, um, if you're gonna do that turkey in hot oil, make sure you do it away from your house and make sure you follow directions carefully. A lot of people get severely burned by doing it wrong and also burn their houses down by doing it wrong. It's a great flavor. If you do it right, it's, it's safe and easy to do. Uh, just make sure you follow the directions for that. Lastly, um, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I hope everybody enjoys, oh, I'm sorry, I did have one more thing before I finish. Happy Thanksgiving. In December, December 14th is Saturday with Santa at the fire station. We did it last year at the, uh, firehouse on, in Churchville because the other stations weren't open. We're gonna move that to the Richborough Station this year. It was a very well-attended event. It is free to the community. You can come, see Santa, see the fire trucks, arts and crafts, et cetera. That'll be on Saturday, December 14th, so save the date. And finally, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I hope everyone enjoys their holiday, spends time eating and with their family and friends. Thank you. Next up, Bob?
Oh, nothing further to report, just happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thanks, Bob. Bill, Assistant Manager?
Nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Solicitor, Mr. Piso?
No report, and happy Thanksgiving to all of you and to the community you serve.
Thank you. Engineers report, Amanda?
And same thing, no report this evening, but happy Thanksgiving to all.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody. Is there any public comment? No public comment? With that, the meeting is adjourned.